And the family members that will be impacted by this, Lord. I pray for the discernment of the board and the leadership of this board, Lord, and that you keep our kids and our schools and our staff safe, Lord, that you keep evil away and you protect them. I pray all of this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I am going to call to order the workshop for October 28, 2025. Welcome citizens of Clay County. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for taking the time on your busy schedule to attend today's school board workshop. This workshop is our opportunity as your elected representatives to collaborate openly among ourselves and make decisions that will decide the future direction of our public schools and the education of our children here in Clay County. There will be an opportunity for the public to ask questions at the end of the workshop presentation. Questions will be allowed. Public comment will not be allowed. If you wish to ask a question, please fill out a comment card with your question and hand that card to a deputy. Your participation is welcomed and appreciated. And at this time, we're going to start with RSM with an update and discussion by Mr. Blondell.
Good morning. I'm Matt Blondell, Director with RSM, and I'm working on the internal audit for the school board. Please Kelly, if you can pull up one of our dashboards. This is something that I discussed with Ms. Hanson a few weeks ago after I started some discussion at a prior board meeting about where we were and what the status was. And so, one of the things I had shared was that some of our other school districts, we provide, once we get started, we provide a monthly update dashboard to the board. It can also be distributed to whoever else you'd like or posted wherever else you'd like. But it essentially just provides a summary of all of the ongoing projects that we have and then where we are, what we've recently completed, what we're doing and what kind of our next steps are. And so, like I said, we're usually on a monthly cadence. The intention would be to provide this to you all and to the audit committee with them copied, but really primarily to the board members here to give you context for what's going on. So, this one was drafted as of October 3. I think we'd like to get into a cadence of doing this on the second Friday of every month. So, you'd expect this in about a week and a half for the next one. And what you'll have is, like I said, essentially an update on what we've had. So, we document what meetings we've had, if we've been putting out requests. And so, you have an opportunity to see if for some reason, you know, requests are coming in slow. I mean, you would see that here. You know, we have not had a problem with that at all and don't expect really having any issues with that. But it just provides you all with an update of the goings on. And then, as we get closer to being in a reporting stage and we're working on a report, we have an audit committee meeting identified and then a board workshop where we would present a final report, that of course would show up here. We'd say, you know, board meeting scheduled for this date. And then, you'd have all the information we have about all the conversations that we're having with management as we lead up to finalizing the report. So, just to provide an overview, like I said, this is pretty dated now. Just about everything here that's on next steps has since been completed. So, the contract compliance work, that's where we're going to select or have selected a sample of contracts. We basically originally obtained from procurement, a listing of contracts and the different types of, so piggybacked and then other types of contracts that the district has reviewed that, looked at things like cost, longevity, number of minutes, nature of the contract, those sorts of things, to identify a list of what we consider to be high-risk contracts. So, and not necessarily all very high-dollar contracts. Some, we wanted to get a good sample of others. So, we selected five. It was a mix of different types, goods, services, large, medium. And then, we have to, then we had a conversation with some of the district employees just to understand their perspectives of risk, just to make sure that we were looking at the right types of contracts. And if there were other things that we couldn't see from the contract listing that would have made sense or that would have been applicable, something for us to consider, we take that under consideration. And then, have basically evolved that information to finalize a sample of contracts. And we've done that. And where we are now is we've basically have requested some information for procurement. I believe that'll be coming in any day now. And then, we will start field work as soon as that's done. On the internal and external penetration testing, we had kickoff meeting with the IT folks and completed our testing of the internal and external penetration work last week. And we're essentially consolidating that information now. We'll be discussing with the IT group any results of that. And then, that'll be getting finalized into a report fairly soon. Just as a reminder, obviously due to the sensitivity of that, when we do present that report, there will be a public version that's just basically a one-pager that says, "We did some work. We talked to the district," and it's on file. It doesn't have any information about any, anything that was found. But we do discuss that with the superintendent with the IT. And then, if the board would like, we can certainly do a closed session to discuss that report with you all. But again, that's where, you know, it's not open to the public because of the sensitive nature of that, of that report. But certainly happy to share that. And we'll work with Mr. Walker to schedule a shade session with the board to go over that or a carve-out of one of the meetings to go over that with you all. So, this is where we intend to go. Certainly, you know, as we have the discussion with you all today, happy to take any feedback. But this is just an example. As I said, we put this together as of October 3, just for an idea for you all to see that. And we'll start to get into cadence. You'll start to see this regularly. And then, anytime that we have activities ongoing, you'll be receiving this every month. And then, of course, once it's finalized, you know, we'll be, probably be having conversations toward the summertime about what the next year audit plan looks like. And then, that's when we would start that back up again. One of the other things I wanted to talk about was I know the, I had some conversations with Ms. Hanson as the boards representative for the audit committee, was about transparency and how things like this and other information is posted for the public to see what's going on in terms of what is in the audit committee. So, it varies by district for your benefit. Some districts provide basically just, hey, there's an audit committee meeting on this date. It's a public notice. And then, anybody that wants to show up can. And that's kind of where it ends. Other districts have websites completely dedicated to the function that have information about when meetings are. They have, they post the meeting minutes. Some of them post recordings. And then, final reports sometimes are, sometimes are not posted. It really just depends on the individual district and what the board and the audit committee want to see posted out there. I do believe, I think Kelly, if you can pull up the website, the district here has created a website for the audit committee that has some good information on it. And I think this mirrors, I talked with Ms. Hanson a few weeks ago. This has been, I think, recently put up and mirrors kind of what we would see in terms of the most amount of information that's being disseminated to the public. So, we've got meeting dates, meeting minutes are posted there, information about the committee, the rules, and then the guidelines and then the policy that deal with the committee. And so, obviously going forward, you know, that would be up to, I suppose, the board and management to work together to figure out if there's going to be additional documents that are posted here, if it's the dashboards or if it's the final reports, or if those are just, you know, available upon request. Of course, that's up to you all, the board, to decide how you want to, how you want to deal with that. So, just wanted to go over that, give you all an update, let you know that we're rocking and rolling.
That's our school board page. No.
Oh, okay. And certainly answer any questions that you all have. We're in the middle of field work with contract compliance and are just getting into reporting with the cybersecurity penetration testing.
Can I get some consensus from the board that you all would like in meeting privately after they're done with IT or other sensitive areas that you would like to be updated?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, you have full board consensus when you finish these. If you would let us know if it's sensitive subjects or whatever, let Mr. Walker know. We can have a shade meeting or whatever legal way of getting the information.
And Ms. Skipper, can I just talk about a few things real quick?
Yeah.
So, if you go to our school board page, there is a link here. This is part of the problem with our community perception of what we're trying to do and not do. So, if you scroll and click on the blue box, scroll up a little, no, on the right-hand side, underneath the school board, yep, scroll up. So, this was created because in most districts, there's a folder, it's our auditor. So, the folder is in the school board page. So, when you started hearing kind of like an uprising about how we're not transparent, would you please click on that folder, the internal audit committee folder? And what you're going to see is the only thing that's ever been put in here is the application, which was way back, like almost a year ago. And so, most people thought that we were basically hiding all of our information based on the fact that when they went to the internal audit folder, there was nothing in there. So, I'm going to make a suggestion, if the board agrees, that whatever we decide goes into the folder needs to be in the folder on the school board webpage. Because we have like two people we're responsible for. We can hire the internal auditor and we can hire our lawyer. And so, I think it would be better to put it where people can find it.
I agree. We need to take it for business affairs and move it on to where it says school board. Create a tab there for it to.
And I would also say that we have the minutes there now in the other folder, which is great, right? And the agendas. But we do, every district I look at, we have a regular meeting, right? We have a chair. We have everything we have here with our five representatives for the five districts. I'm going to suggest that we actually do recordings of those meetings and have links like we do a regular school board meeting because they are official meeting of the board and there are representatives. And I feel like we do need to have a way, if someone wants to go watch our discussions, to go to it and watch our discussions. Everybody has, and we don't have a lot of meetings. So, it's not that much work. We only have a couple of meetings a year to put that on there. So, minutes, agendas, final reports, the board agrees, but not when it's something to do with security should be placed there. And maybe the public video. And I think Polk County has something very similar to that. You gave me a couple of examples. So, there are some examples of districts and how they do it. If you guys wanted to look it up, we can get you those counties that have different kinds of websites. But I think if, maybe you guys could talk about it for a second. Final reports, agendas, final reports when applicable, agendas, minutes, and then maybe the YouTube public meeting video.
Is the IT already there? Have they been? No. Or are they quarterly?
This one, we met way back in April. Our meetings in November. So, this was actually because they had to get started and do the first part. I think we are quarterly, maybe?
Typically, audit committees would meet on a quarterly basis. And also, I don't know if this was discussed either. But usually, the audit committees would also review the financial statement audits. So, the work that your other CPA firms are doing, which should be coming out relatively soon. I think that usually is probably wrapping that up about now. I don't know.
Is that part of the discussion then on the next audit committee meeting?
I don't know if the agenda's been posted. But yeah, typically, the financial statement results would be presented to the audit committee and discussed if any questions are there before they're officially posted or finalized by the auditors there.
So, I feel like the more information, the better.
Okay. So, the question would be for board consensus. Do you agree with everything going in that folder that Ms. Hanson said? And do you agree with live streaming or YouTube streaming, live streaming, whichever?
I'm fine with that. I think transparency is good. I would just ask Mr. Browski's opinion on, because that's staff hours. So, I just want to make sure that that's reasonable and.
I think we need to schedule it during an appropriate time where it would be work hours. As we did last time, I think it started at two from that.
Yeah. It was during business hours, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was late in the afternoon, wasn't it?
How late did we go?
No, I'm just saying it was late in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Anything for transparency. We probably don't look at, if we're going to do that, we need to look at other areas as well.
Yeah.
So, you okay with both of this?
Yeah.
Mr. Alber? And I as well. So, I guess the direction of the board would be to first all of those things and that folder, move it over from business affairs. And then, start live streaming our meetings.
Ms. Skipper, I'm sorry, but the dashboard, since it keeps everybody up to date, is that something we would want to share with them as well, this dashboard? I mean, what's your thought on that?
It's completely up to the board. I don't think all of our, I don't think any of the other school districts that we have post the dashboard, but it's certainly available if anybody were to ask to be forwarded that. It's just usually used as an update for the board members and the audit committee just to understand what's going on and when the reports are going to be presented or when we're anticipating the report to be finalized and those sorts of things. But I mean, nothing in here, you know, should really raises concern for me. I don't think it should raise a concern for you if it's posted, but it's up to you on whether or not you want to do that.
Will the other documents show like what's next without the dashboard?
No, probably not. So, what we would have, essentially the final version of a report would basically be what would be posted. And that would be, that would be provided to the audit committee about a week before their meeting and then to the board at basically the same time. And then, we'd make presentations at a workshop like this after the audit committee. And then, that would be posted to the website. But no, in terms of, you know, how things are progressing, if this wasn't posted, no, it wouldn't necessarily be publicly available.
So, this would alleviate a lot of conversation and emails because they could go look themselves if this were posted on like what's next, where we're at, all of those things.
Sure. If you're getting a lot of those questions, it would probably be helpful just so they can see that there is movement. Because like I said, if you look at them back-to-back or even if you only posted the most recent one, it'd be the most updated version. And you could see all the conversations that have been occurring and then what's next. And then, every month, it'll, you know, things here shift there and.
It's not that we get like an overwhelming amount. It's just some who are highly interested in this. So, they want to know. And I think that if we post this, then there's no question. It's full transparency. This is where we are. This is where we're going. So, are we okay with posting the, is it Ms. Gilhelvin? Yes.
I don't think it's necessary. I think we've got enough with what we're being reminded.
Okay. So, Ms. Clark, so no. Ms. Hanson?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Alber? Right on the yes. So, if we could move forward with posting this as well so that people in the community can see where we're at and where we're going, that'd be great too. Any other further questions?
Appreciate you coming and spending time with me on the phone, especially when things are new. I know I might have a lot of questions, but you clarifying what's going on is a big help for us. So, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Phone lines are always open, of course, to anybody, any board member, any member of management. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you have as we work through these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. So, next, we're going to do our board policy that we wanted to bring forward from the last board meeting. The verbiage that was taken out that I am recommending that we put back in is. Okay. This policy grants the superintendent the authority in addition to that provided by state statutes. It shall not be constructed to limit the superintendent's statutory powers. But, hold on.
Ms. Skipper, are you in 31?
Hold on. Well, I'm trying to find that folder, but it couldn't back. Which one? Oh, right here. Okay. So, on 3140.01, disciplinary suspension without pay. This verbiage will go into 3140 and.
3140 and 3140.01.
Can we talk about 3140.01? Can we talk about?
That's where I'm at. That's where I'm at. So, B, I was suggesting that we put that back in where the superintendent shall notify the board of actions taken. That way, there can be discussion prior to actions being taken from the board. It gives us the option, trying to tread lightly here, so that things can be discussed with the board prior.
So, I just want to tell you that most districts have that language. So, it's not really treading lightly. It's so that we have good communications with the superintendent.
I meant for the situation.
Yeah, the situation. So, I know that. So, I just wanted to say a little something maybe before we dive into this. You know, I was thinking about this a lot in the last month. You know, courage isn't just in a battlefield, right? Courage happens in emergency rooms, on the streets with our police. Courage happens in courthouses, in classrooms. You know where courage also happens is in our school board meetings. And it needs to happen because we make really, really tough decisions and we might not always get them right. And so, I feel like the discipline issues that came up in the last month, you know, we were given appropriate responses from the district on how to deal with it from the board side. Had questions as a board of how we handle our discipline. You know, the outrage of the community prompted for me a larger discussion that maybe to meet our needs when it comes to teacher discipline, we need to have collaboration in some of these special cases. You know, superintendents, whether they're elected or not elected, we still have to talk to each other. We are all part of that formula. And at times, the board may or may not agree with the superintendent. But when we have volatile subjects, subjects that affect our community deeply, more input, having things on an agenda so the board has the ability to discuss it, that's it. That's what we need to be doing, is having the ability, the courage to discuss. Because sometimes policies are so wide open, it doesn't really include the simple concept of what's right and what's wrong. You know, policies are very broad sometimes. And ultimately, as a board, we're responsible for any decisions that are made in the district. And we're held accountable for the structures of those policies and how it relates to how we decide our decisions. So, basically, there needs to be collaboration. And I certainly do not want to take power from superintendent to do all of his things he needs to do with regards. There are many different things. He makes decisions for us. But sometimes, things might come up where the board, the only time we can ever talk to each other is either at an agenda or a workshop. So, sometimes, when it comes to these complicated issues that might take some courage to resolve, at least giving the board the opportunity to weigh in like we always have under our human, you know, human resource action A, action B, action C. So, we just want to make sure that we have that ability to have a discussion in confidence at meetings. That's where I come from. I'm not saying anybody made right or wrong decisions. But I can tell you, it opened my eyes to wanting to make sure we make the best decision. And I think the board is part of that, ultimately responsible for that. So, what Madam Chair was saying, like in 3140, all the school boards have that there for a reason. And in 3140, we haven't talked about that one yet by itself, that's common language. I actually have here four different counties that have all of this language in it. And it wasn't struck out. And if we read through it, I think we'll understand why. I just wanted you to know where I come from on that, that sometimes more people working together to solve problems that are more complicated makes sense to me. Ms. Skipper?
Well, so, let's focus on 3140.01 real quick. So, line B, Mr. Alber, are you good with putting that back in? Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
3140B.
3140.
Are we talking about the suspension?
This one. 31.
Point one.
3140.01, line B.
I mean, I'm not sure why it was removed. Obviously, we had discussion before. In a sense, we were all given the opportunity to discuss this with the superintendent, all of these issues, as well as HR. So, fine by putting it back in because we're not doing anything different. So.
I think there was discussion after the discipline had already taken place. This would be discussion before the discipline had taken place.
And we had the opportunity to discuss before. So, on an individual basis. So, I'm fine with it going back in. It doesn't matter.
This would also give us the ability to put it on an agenda so that we can discuss it as a board. Whereas before, we were not able to do that.
I understand. I don't read it that way. It's our, the disciplinary actions taken are on our agenda and you can discuss them. But it's legally advised that we are careful about that.
Correct. But when B is removed, he does not have to discuss underneath this policy any actions under five days when you remove B, which is why we were in the predicament that we were in at the last school board meeting because action had already been taken and we were not able to discuss it as a board because it was not an agenda item. If we discuss this individually, that's one thing. But if there is consensus individually to put it on the agenda item, as an agenda item, we can discuss it as a board. That's the purpose of putting B back in. Whereas last time, we did not.
I was reading it that the superintendent would notify us once the action is taken, but it's different.
Mr. Walker, do we need to change that language just before taken?
Yeah, that's up to y'all's board. It's ultimately y'all's policy. When this was reviewed by the OLA originally, that was taken out. Obviously, there have been some recent issues that have come up and y'all have evaluated that. And but ultimately, yeah, there's some matters that y'all are not, really not going to want to, you know, when there's discipline, there's a lot of discipline that takes process that y'all probably do not want to review to your level. That's why it's delegated down to the superintendent. It would be, create a lot of work for y'all when you have situations like this where it's risen to this level. You know, this is all coming on both the superintendent and his role and y'all's board working together. But ultimately, you know, it's y'all's decision if y'all want to adjust the language and go back to the original.
When we discussed this before and there was language we were discussing to put back in this, giving us the ability to be able to discuss it and put it on an agenda item, like I'm saying. We said that this line would do that. But I don't want there to be workaround because it says, when shown by the board of action taken. So, that doesn't necessarily mean before or after. It just means when action is going, like being taken. So, is he going to tell us before it's being taken or after? Because you can interpret it two different ways. So, do we need stronger verbiage?
Recommendation. Recommendation.
But before the recommendation or?
He recommends to us and then we make the decision.
So, I know I didn't know about some of the things that happened. I did not know ahead of time. I mean, I don't know why I would have, I know, unless someone told me because we don't talk to each other. I absolutely did not know about what the district decided. And under normal circumstances, I don't need to know. I mean, he makes all kinds of decisions that we don't need to know about. So, I understand. I think what you're getting at is we need, when it's something, let's just say really important, we need the opportunity to be able to discuss it. Everything? No. But I would, I would need to know.
To discuss it as a board, not with the superintendent?
On something, you know how we have actions that have been a lot less than the one that currently just went by? We've had that before where it's on there. This is the human resource action. And we have opportunity to discuss it. That's what I'm saying needs to happen. Not on every single thing, but maybe it's something that could be handled between the board chair, whomever that is, and the superintendent to decide on the ones that are a little bit more volatile, should it be on the agenda or not? I mean, at least we would know about it ahead of time. And the board chair and the superintendent could decide whether or not they want to put it on the agenda.
So, I guess my only concern, and Mr. Walker can help me with this. From my understanding, the way that it's decided whether something goes on the agenda or not is purely by policy and past precedent. So if something doesn't reach that level of disciplinary action, it doesn't come to the board. Kind of like with student discipline, how we see only expulsions. We don't see every suspension, right? So I'm thinking that it has to do that. And then my concern would be if you break policy or you break past precedent and you treat one employee differently than you treat other employees for the same disciplinary action, that that might put us in...
But the policy doesn't read... The policy's wide open, it has no clarification.
Well, and just to go to, to answer both y'all, so to go to, Mrs. Gilhousen, to your point. So now it's going to make y'all aware of this. You have an employee that was disciplined and terminated. And they've heard a law firm who's now wants to have a three-day hearing with y'all. And I'm going to make a recommendation to y'all about that later. So the challenge is, a lot of times, y'all as a board are... We almost want to shield y'all for... So there has to be different layers of decision-making. So I think the way the policy was originally written was written in a way that provides, delegate some of the students to the superintendent, not to put him on the hot seat, but some of the decision-making would fall on the superintendent. So the board, in some ways, could be removed from it because y'all are not here day-to-day. You're not working here full-time. You're not in the heat of the moment, right? So that would... So there's a policy that kind of delegates that down to the superintendent. Now, I think what Mrs. Hanson's saying, I'm coming back to you, ma'am, what Mrs. Hanson is saying, if I understand it correctly, is sometimes there are instances that are unforeseen. You know, it was hard to predict some of these, you know, very politically-charged situations that came up. And that in the public, you know, raises questions about how is this being handled? How is the board handling it? So the normal course was followed and the normal procedures followed, was investigated. But maybe members of the public are not satisfied with how that went down. So there might be a way in the policy to address it where there's a threshold, where it's a issue of great public concern or something like that. And I've spoken to the superintendent about some language like that where maybe that would be a trigger. Now, we'd have to define what that would be, right? Because it's hard to foresee what issues of great public concern would be. The way it is in your policies now, if an employee creates an environment where it creates dysfunction or hinders the operations of the school district, then there's actions that are taken. So that's kind of the trigger. If you disrupt the actions of the, you know, superintendent, if it brings you a repute or just all sorts of, you know, things. An example of this is not to get too adult here. There is a school district where a teacher, you know, had an adult... You know, had a side business on an adult entertainment site, right? So that became a big, a big issue, right? So, you know, it became an issue with that school district. So they were able to take action and fire that employee based on that because it was hard. Our human parents are finding outlet. So I think what's hard in this situation is defining, and going to your point, Mrs. Gilhousen, we really want it codified in our policy so it's consistent across the board. Because that's where it creates more of a legal challenge where, you know, we are going to be... Some of these decisions are going to be litigated. And one is about to be litigated. And one of the reasons why, you know, I believe we'll be successful, and outside council believes we'll be successful, because y'all as a board and the superintendent staff operated appropriately, handled it appropriately. But when we have kind of disparity in how we implement our policies, that work can create some challenges. So maybe, so maybe Freeallsa Board is trying to define what are those issues of great public concern that maybe the superintendent should, you know, this is, this is an issue that I need to bring to the board because it's of great public concern. It's outside the normal course of discipline issues.
So, Mr. Blocker, if we're going up based off of this logic and the logic that Ms. Gilhousen just stated, then prior to us accepting this policy, we were inconsistent. Because I guess we didn't have a policy. Because there were times where we were given five days no pay, 10 days with pay.
I think it's...
They were all inconsistent. Now that we have this policy, it is now, we don't see those anymore. Because if it's under five days. But the problem is, is now we are leaving that great public concern and/or, this is a prime example. You guys didn't think that the last one was of great public concern when it was, depending on different platforms you were on and the emails and the text messages and the things that some of us received that others did not. That's up to your interpretation. And now, it's gone further and we may or may not have, have acted appropriately. So my point is, when things like that happen, I think that if you're not upholding our code of conduct, a standard within what we as a board set and expect as our employees here, that we as a board, again, not every issue. But here's the thing. Let's say Mr. Brasky's not here anymore and it's the next superintendent. What if he doesn't have a moral compass like Mr. Brasky? What if he doesn't have a standard like Mr. Brasky does? And then we're just allowing this to be open for interpretation. And we've got God knows who working for us and doing things.
You could say the same without the school board. You don't know how it's going to change.
Correct. But you're like, you are also held accountable to voters and the governor and all of these things.
And we also have a concern...
Correct, there's five and not one.
We have a big concern with lawsuits. And we have a big concern with the fact that we don't delegate the operation. And we have to trust our superintendent. We have to trust our HR department. And when we pay counsel to review these cases, we have the opportunity to talk to everyone in this district. So I don't, I don't see what the issue is.
So if you don't agree with that issue...
I had as many people calling to support this individual, back morse. So, you know, it's all, it's back to interpretation, but lawsuits would be...
Well, that's insane. It depends on which board member. Because I didn't have one call me to support it.
There you go.
Not one.
And that's why we probably, as a board, could never agree properly on an action where the district can.
I do know there was many different actions that could be taken. Nobody's saying... I just know that in the end, what we did may not have been the best action. There's many things that superintendents and human resources can do, many different options, right? And when it is, I would say, maybe teacher-student trust. If defined, if you're looking at the leadership, the professional standards for the state of Florida. If we were to put a case in front of what the state of Florida looks at in order to judge a teacher, that might give us some guidelines as to what type of things the board should talk about. Because honestly, I understand what Ms. Clark's saying, but I actually didn't know about it until after. So there is a problem. 3139.01, when it talks about discipline, says, "The school board retains the right and the responsibility to manage the workforce." All I'm asking is that we have an opportunity to take part in that. And how we define it, maybe we do just need to look at those through a different lens. Maybe the lens of the state of Florida. I don't know. Is it something we need to think about and come back to? Bring some ideas about how we could refine that part? But I do know, in my heart, I don't think we got it right. And we just need to be able to talk to each other. I understand what Ms. Clark's saying. If, in fact, I always knew ahead of time, it absolutely makes sense. And I believe I have people, because of free speech on both sides, that talk to me. But that's really not the issue I'm talking about. I'm talking about when it's something deeply concerning to parents and it does involve students, that we have an opportunity to weigh in. So, Mr. Blocker, is there that lens that the state of Florida will look at versus how we looked at it? Is there a way to, I don't know, Madam Chair, if we could come back to it and get some of that language to put in there? What do you think?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Mr. Brasky.
So a couple of things. While we were referring, talking about the employees, since that's currently being litigated, like this day. So I'm in favor of adding the language and having that discussion because I recognize the board would want to have the information along that way. And so I, you know, I appreciate that. So I'm not opposed to adding the language. But I do, I do say that the purpose of that language, just so we understand the concept here, is discipline should be timely, right? You can't wait a month to discipline a person. So most of us know that when we have, even our own family, you would discipline your child. Run away, you wouldn't wait a month to discipline your child for the actions taken. So the purpose is the timeliness and the effectiveness of it. And so, I can just kind of remind or just kind of give the board a sense of what actually happens so you understand the complication there. So when, when information is given that there was an infraction by an employee to anyone, right? Like, when you give that to me, my first action by statute is to give it to HR. They're the investigative agency within, like, county schools. They then, part of their job, they have many jobs, evaluation, salary, all kinds of stuff. But discipline is clearly in their, in their wheelhouse, right? Those people have to be the investigator. And part of the investigating is to interview the people that are involved, so the witnesses directly. Then their role is to substantiate facts. What are the actual facts? What can be proven in this particular case? They research past precedent. How have similar cases or light cases been handled? You can't discipline a person with one consequence one time and then a totally different consequence the next time if they're similar in nature. So there's a comparative analysis that goes with cases in order to determine what is the appropriate consequence. They consult legal advice, including our labor attorney or other firms related to it because of the litigation piece of it. They then file that to the state for the state to review. So all of this is going on. They research the employment history because the past history of an employee is factored. For example, if a person has two or three discipline incidents or has never had a discipline incident, there is, that is part of the factors that go into it. All of that's done and then it's brought forward as a recommendation, right? Now, the recommendation is important because in a case where the recommendation is such, all of those things are done by those people, prove a guidance to the superintendent, and then it's brought forward as a recommendation. The real challenge in situations like this is if you go against the recommendation. And say you disagree with the recommendation. "I don't like that recommendation. I want to recommend something else." You, by nature, open yourself up to litigation. And the reason why that is, is because if it is litigated and the board takes a different consequence and they bring that forward, what's going to happen is, they would bring forward me, probably. That's what I would do if I was the attorney. I'd bring forward the superintendent. I'd ask the superintendent, "What did you do?" "Okay, we interviewed these people. We substantiated these facts. We consulted our labor attorney. We looked at past precedent. We reviewed the statute contract language. We looked at the employee's history and this is the decision that we came up with in a comparative analysis." Okay, we did all of those things. And they're going to say, "Well, why did you recommend that? Well, here's why we recommended that." Why did the board recommend something different? I don't know why the board recommended something different. So it creates a real...
Can also explain that.
It kind of, it kind of, it kind of...
Conduct? I mean, there's, there's a whole list of things that could have been explained.
Right, but there's a reason. I guess what I'm trying to point out is, the very people that have expertise in the area make the recommendation off a wide range of factors. When you go against that recommendation, you open yourself up. So I think it's best if we had that conversation before so that we know if this is going to be one of those cases that rise to that level or not. And I think putting the language back allows the opportunity to do that.
Well, I agree. But we're going to have to revise the language a little bit more because the way, the way, if you go back to it, and I agree with your point. I think it's, to answer your point, I think, really answer all y'all's questions, you really want to create a scenario where these conversations are happening before. Because we don't want a scenario where a decision is made and y'all as a board, which ultimately, ultimately, y'all as a board are accountable and have, have the ability per statute to do it. But we want to create a scenario where we're not feeding the trial bar, where they can litigate against us based on these decisions. Because, you know, you're going to have different law firms, we're dealing with one now, where they feel that this has created an opening for them to challenge it. Everything was done appropriately. The staff did a great job. Y'all as a board did a great job. The superintendent did. We're going to be successful in that. But maybe putting language in it beforehand, that the, you know, I'm just, as I'm looking at it, "The superintendent shall notify the board prior to any final action being taken." And that creates an opportunity where if the board members are hearing from constituents and maybe there's additional facts that the staff does not have or the investigative agency doesn't have, that creates an opportunity to get to those facts. One of the things that was unique about this situation, I don't want to get into the specifics of it because I'm sure we'll be dealing with some litigation at some point. There was information that came out later that I was not aware of. I don't think Mr. Brasky or some of the staff were aware of. I can't speak for everyone's knowledge, but some information has, and that, that happens, right? There, there's always going to be people mining social media and "I heard this and this." So creating language where the superintendent shall notify the board prior to actions being taken or final action being taken. That way, it creates a discussion prior to, where it's not an after the fact, where then y'all are put in a position where y'all are having to go back and return it. And it creates that scenario. I do agree, I think, I mean, I don't want to create legal strategy for people watching this video, but I think, I think that does create a real concern about. We don't want to, a scenario where the staff is being used against the board, where the board is reaching a different conclusion than, you know, he's being deposed and asking about... Not saying that would happen here, but I think, so I think, Madam Chair, your original question, I think all of y'all kind of touched on it. I think crafting language that would require the superintendent to bring it to y'all's attention. Y'all can also look at some language if it's an issue of, and I was using the terminology of a matter of great public concern because it's hard to define what that would be. This, this is a very unique situation. I use the example of, of the other school district where they had a teacher that was on some adult entertainment site. Because that's bizarre. That's not anything any of us really could contemplate. It just happens, right? So, in that situation, that board and that superintendent were faced with a very difficult... Because it was completely removed from the school. Nothing happened to the school district. There was no commentary in the school district. It's just this second level of employment is not consistent with the value system of teaching.
Do you see what I'm saying? That could be interpretation. Because what if you had a different superintendent who thought there was nothing wrong with that? So using that verbiage, I actually like the verbiage you just said before final action is taken.
I agree. I think that's much better than, than tiptoeing into muddy water.
Correct. Because then that leaves it up for...
I'm in, I'm in agreement with the language.
Prior to any action taken, I think, would be...
Yeah, prior to final action being taken.
So is it okay if I just read out loud, just make sure everyone understood? So we'd read, so we'd go back to, to section B and this is of, I'm sorry, I don't remember the law. So this is of 1012, sorry. I'm sorry, this is 3140.01. So B, which is, there's A and C, so we bring B back. It would be, "The superintendent shall notify the board prior to any actions being taken."
Any, or final action.
Or final action. Or final action.
Because we were going to interview down...
Right.
Absolutely. And that could be an opportunity for the superintendent with HR to ask board members, "Y'all are being contacted by constituents. Is there maybe information that we don't have that's, 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 that would be..." You know, again, you want to be careful because we don't want to turn HR investigations into public, you know, public opinions. But, but also, there may be information that came out that we were not aware of or someone may have had an interaction that was important to notify. So I think that would, that would protect us legally as well. It'd be hard to argue with that from a policy standpoint if we were sued over that or say, "Look, it's reasonable that the investigative body..." And this happens all the time. I mean, judges, you know, law enforcement gets the judges, get warrants to do further investigation. There's a conversation that's had. That's completely appropriate in our system of justice, so.
And I want, I want to make sure we say, "Prior to any final action being taken." Because to your point, Mr. Brasky, we don't want to slow down the process. So, you know, just before there's a final decision, notifying the board would be sufficient.
After we get on the facts of everything, right, and analyzing.
So, Mrs. Hanson, are you going with that verbiage?
No.
Ms. Mr. Alvaro, you agree with that? And then us three are going to...
Yes.
Where are we adding that? Didn't you say we had to add it to 3142?
For B on 40.01, but you have to also add it to 3140.
Where?
On the second paragraph. It says, "No employee may be suspended from duty except by superintendent or..." At the end of that paragraph...
or, at the end of that paragraph, we should add in the same exact language that we just read. And that would, that would help in this situation.
Yes, man, the only other thing to clarify, and I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, is is a matter, I would, I was just leaving it broad open so it could be, you know, I would not try to define it further as far as that's in a board meeting, that could be, because there might be a one-on-one meeting that would be required based on the circumstances of it that would require more than a phone call. So I would leave it open, open-ended as far as what that communication level is and that we can fine-tune it as need be, if that makes sense.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Kelly, you...
I got it. Yep, yes, sir. I got it. We want to make sure this one checks to see there probably is the same language in the support.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll look at the support.
I will, I will go through and if the board is...
Because HR, the discipline, we have the different policies, so you'd want to be consistent with everything.
All right, so is that what the board would like to see?
Yes.
Consistency across all, okay.
And we'll have to go through the notification period and...
Advertise it.
Advertise it. So we have about a 30-day window before we would, but there's nothing precluding, you know, that if we have an incident tomorrow in the spirit of this, you know, we could go ahead and kind of start with...
Well, knock on wood, no incidents tomorrow.
Thank you.
Just leave that out. Absolutely, I was going to plan to do all three chapters.
Is there any further discussion or anything that the board wants to talk about or put on the agenda or...
I just wanted to see if we could get a schedule to maybe start looking at some of the parts of the student code of conduct as a board, we've never done that.
Do you want to like pick a topic? It's no...
Can I get, can I get with you, like go home and look through it and see?
We can, we can add that to the next agenda or a specific topic.
My pieces and you can let me know if it's like, one thing is enough for that meeting or whatever, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Anything else?
And so you'll contact him then? Yeah. Just to make sure I've got all the details? Because he'll be able to gauge whether or not it can, how much time it would take maybe, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's, if our board discussion will go on to, do you want to do the agenda or...
Let's do, let's do school advisory council. We have Jennifer Collins here, just a quick setup, you get set up. You know, one of the things the board said is, hey, let's make sure that we really focus on, when did the engagement of our community? So we really ramped up several things, you saw our community presentation that we gave with Miss McMillan, and now you have authority in that role talking about all of the ways that we integrate with our folks. In addition to that, you know, you see me always talking about what the district has done and you can see the graphic that's up on the screen, talking about being an A district, our graduation rate, our, where we rank in comparison to other. I guess the point I wanted to make today, a little different, is there's a lot of work behind the scenes that causes that to occur and a lot of things that occur that people aren't aware of. One of those is our school improvement walks. So we're going to get a quick description here from Ms. Collins who leads the word.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Good morning, board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a minute. So what you have in front of you in your packet is the composition of all the school advisory council members. And so the school advisory council, or SAC, is a council that meets at every single school. There are a variety of stakeholders on these councils, including teachers, staff members, parents, community members, faith-based partners, and in high schools, even students. And so this is a group that meets at least quarterly at each school and discusses the school improvement efforts that happen at the school. And like Mr. Brodsky said, we conduct school improvement walks at many of our schools. We've done 30 to date this school year. And what that is, is we have a team of us from the district that goes in and offers support. We want classrooms collaboratively with teacher, excuse me, with the administration and see just the things happening in the classrooms. Based on the information that we see, we look at their school improvement plans, we consider the input from all of the stakeholders and just develop some collective action steps and ways that we can support the schools in moving forward to ensure that we're having just these fabulous results that we see in Clay County. And so again, the role of the SAC then is to continuously help monitor and implement the strategies and provide different supports to the school. So not only is this a way for us to be in compliance with our school board policy and with state statute, but also like Mr. Brodsky said, just to involve our families and community members. So it's exciting to look at all of our SAC memberships and to see all of the involvement that we have in our schools towards working together towards these efforts. So, thank you.
She's modest. The school improvement walk is a two, two to three hour venture. We're going out in classrooms. We usually will split up as groups. We go in using a very calibrated walk through instrument, there's an act of like, people always ask, well, how do you know that's happening in the classroom? It's pretty simple, we're there to see these things and we keep track of that data and go into the classroom, but then we use that data and the observations of two to three different groups, in fact, go into the same classrooms to look and then make the determination as to action steps, how do we improve, right? Because no matter how good you are, you can always improve. That's the bottom line, you'll never reach nirvana in educational data, no more. So we're just always looking for that next step. So there's several things we do in order to ensure that success, you know, ensuring that success becomes more and more difficult, I don't know if the board recognizes that the state has increased the bar and raised the standard again this year and will probably in the next year also do that. So you have to perform better each year in order to receive the same ranking and the same grade that you always have, so it's kind of the name of, the name of the game. So any questions on that?
One.
Sure.
Could a board member attend a school improvement walk?
Sure.
I'd like to see that process and understand what you guys are looking for when we walk.
I'll get with you after because there's one coming up, you might be interested.
Thank you.
That would be pretty intimidating. That's what I think you were...
Hello. Okay, nice.
Oh boy, do I need my seatbelt?
Yeah. When we were on SAC, elementary's Andrew High, that was a question that always came up, you know, we're already, we've improved so much, how can you, you know, without raising the bar, improve even more? So it was tough.
For sure. Kelly, can you pop up that other presentation? One of the things that I do before going over the agenda is do a quick, do a quick budget overview. So if you look up at the screen, I'm going to kind of give you a five-minute version of budget because I always say to, to my wife, Sue, I say, hey, when is it just going to be like an easy year? And she just looks at me and laughs. And I say, what are you talking about? Well, since I've come around, we've closed schools, we've had arguments in public about masks or no masks, we've had all of these books, you name it, right? There's all kinds, every year, something new. Certainly this year, the new thing, which has always been a thing, is the budget, that's the new challenge that we have. So if you remember, I can show you this graphic, basically said, ideally, just like at home, you have to be making more money than you spend. It's not any different for school districts. It gives you a breakdown of where the money comes from. I think it's kind of interesting that the majority of the money comes from the state, not from local taxpayers to support education in Clay County. Unfortunately, the challenge was that the expenditures exceed the revenue. So there's only two ways to get out of that issue. One is to get more revenue, the other is to spend less, right? Really basic stuff, and that's what we were working on this year. So if you look at, remember this story that I told you at the beginning of May, we started the process with no fourth calculation. So school districts base their budget for the next year off of the information that the state gives you as to where you end up in fourth calculation. By the way, still have not given us a fourth calculation, school districts, and that has never happened in the history of the state of Florida. So when I talk about the budget, I want to kind of paint the picture so you understand that some, these are some of the things that have never happened before in the history of our state related to this issue. The second bulging point is the state didn't disperse their last payment. They simply said to districts, we've run out of money and we're not giving you your last payment. That's $47 million statewide. So good question that I'd be asking, and I hope all viewers ask, is how is it that you get to that point, state, and you say, we don't have the money to pay you anymore for $47 million? Prorated to Clay County, that's 647 because of student population in our county versus, let's say Miami-Dade or Hillsborough or another larger district. So one of the challenges and one of the reasons why that occurred is because the state had roughly 25,000 students duly enrolled on paper in the public school system and in a voucher program somewhere across the state. That's a lot of students that need to be accounted for properly. In addition, if you recall, federal funds were initially withheld for months, for Title 1, 2, 3, and 4, those were reinstated at a lower rate later on down, later on down the road. So if you recall, also, we talked about enrollment didn't need projection last year, previous year, had a cost of 3.1.
Can I just ask about the Title 1?
Sure.
I mean, it comes in at a lower rate, then you just have to make cuts across, how did...
You would have to readjust the budget for that category in order to compensate for that loss.
All right, so you just had to take it away from...
Take it away from...
From something.
From that program.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to...
It was a slight decrease, it wasn't like the whole...
Yeah.
In addition, FRS, by the way, FRS has gone up every year for the past four years that I've tracked it. This year's additional price tag is $1 million. And you see the increased vouchers impacting Clay County schools by about $30 million, $30 million. The graph that Kelly's going to show you kind of shows that, right? So you don't have to be a rocket scientist to see what's happening, you know, you can see it now, the $29.5 million. So it's over $4 billion statewide, and you'll notice that in '23, '24, you start to see this really dramatic proliferation of vouchers.
Is that, is those $30 million counting from '27 up to now, not $30 million in one year?
$30 million in one year.
In one year.
In one year. Right? So if you're, if you're wondering why we're talking about the budget, wonder no more, right? It's like, you can see right there the amount that is going out this year will be 30 million. So I never did that, but that'd be an interesting math problem to add it across and see what that number would be because that would be the total over the years.
So prior to new legislation, it was just things like the Hope Scholarship, the McKay Scholarship?
It originally started off in the '17, '18 school year for disabled students originally. The McKay Scholarship was for bullied individuals, and then as each year went by, the legislature tweaked the law to allow more people to be eligible. So in '23, '24 is the year where it took off the cap on income. So you can be, you can be a millionaire in the state of Florida and receive a voucher to, for your child to attend a private school. Okay? So I don't need to tell you, I'm the public school superintendent, so you know my thoughts. Not all of us have made it clear what my thoughts are and I don't, I don't really care, you know, so I'm going to say it publicly. Okay, this is taking money from public education. I don't know how to say it diplomatically, that's what's happening, all right? So when you look at our budget, then we have to then make adjustments for that, so, yeah, let me go on to the next page. The revenue portion of that, the last budget was .78. Inflation was 2.9%, or it's currently 2.9%, that's a loss of about $14 million. How about this one? TSIA, which is the Teacher Salary Initiative, was reduced by the legislature 55% from the previous year. Okay, the TSIA, Teacher Salary Initiative, funds were reduced by 55% from the previous year. So the previous year was 2.7 million, this is the money that the state gives you specifically in a categorical to pay, to help pay teacher salaries, and 1.2, that's a loss of 55%. We're actually, if you round that, 56%.
I mean, they, they give us the money to maintain that first-year teacher salary every year?
They give it.
And this is just the little bit they gave for everybody else, right?
This is the, this will be the additional money to pay added compensation increase.
Okay.
Okay, so zero increase in funding for safe schools and mental, and mental health. You know, this is not just a Clay County thing, this is happening across the state. In fact, there was a news blast yesterday that I saw Broward County, you know, recently announced looking for $85 million in their budget now. So I think we were proactive in an attempt to stave this off in May, and we've done several things in order to do that. Kelly, if you go ahead and advance. Here are all the things that we've done so far and more in order to, in order to write the expenditure piece of that. You have to, you have to cut expenditures, right? If the state is not going to give you more money, which they, they did give a slight amount more, the .78 that I talked about, and if inflation is 2.9, you're automatically $14 million in the hole to start with, going out of the gate. So I felt like we were proactive in trying to address the situation early, but it's going to require the whole year to a successful ending of the school year. So when you look at allocations, 82% of our budget is people-oriented, it's salaries, it's benefits, all of that, we're in the people business, that makes sense, right? It's what we do in the people business. So we went ahead, we prioritized students in the classroom and our employees, we wound up reducing 240 some odd jobs. As you guys recall, it's very, very, just as an HR person, that's like a gut punch. Just says, that's really tough because I know we all care about our employees and at the same time, you have to do what you have to do, just like at home. If you're receiving less money than you're spending, there's only two ways out, make more money or spend less. Those are the only two ways out of the problem, right? Or a combination of those two things, which, which we're currently working on. So the reduction of allocations is huge, I'm very thankful for, for all the folks involved in that. You know, we, we wound up coming out of that the best that we could, we had cooperation from everybody related to that particular issue. I think most people saw that and said, okay, you know, just like at home, your home budget, we have to do that. We reduced district budgets by 20%. 20% is a huge number, I don't know if you recognize how high that number is. When people talk about a 10% cut, they gasp and they go, oh, 10%. 20% is even larger. In order to get to a balanced budget, you either have to do the following, reduce more allocations and affect more employees, or you have to have a combination of things to reach that amount. If we were to only reduce the budget by people, just people, and did nothing else, we just reduced people, that number would almost, almost come, just short, like 960, 960 people. That's, that would be the cost that it would take to reduce the budget. Obviously, you can't do, you can't do that, right? So you have to look for a way to do a combination of things in order to make a balanced budget happen. So 20%, let me just say this, when you look at 20% reduction across the board, there are categories that'd be very difficult to achieve 20%. So the one that I always use as an example because I think people can grasp this really quick, energy, electricity is not something that's going to be reduced by 20%. In fact, it'll go up, you saw your energy bill at home, you realize the rates have gone up. So, so you can't anticipate that 20%, thus the need for monitoring the whole year long, right? Because we all are. I know that Dawn really appreciates coming over here this year especially, right? She came over to a very challenging situation. We renegotiated, she, she questions that decision every day.
Yeah.
No, she doesn't. She does it with a laugh and a smile. Rennegociating, cancel... We renegotiate and cancel contracts, probably the two ones that are most noted are Penda and I already, and we take you to look at all district contracts and renegotiate all contracts. We reduce staff travel, increased monitoring, did ROI. So, you can see all of those things are going on right now. But we recognize that, that the heart of our community, our school community is our employees. And I think the board should recognize their past history related to this. So, when you look up at the screen and on the sheet that you have in front of you, you can see the, the history of those salary compensation increases. You can see in the nineteen, twenty school years, a recurring increase, six point three million. So, let's, let me remind the board what a recurring increase is. So, if you buy something and it's a one-time purchase, it's, it's over.
You're reminding everyone in the county right now.
I am.
This is really good.
So, so when you look at salaries, salary is a recurring cost. Once you pay that cost one year, it compounds onto the next year and the next year and the next year. It never goes away. You buy a product, like you buy a school bus, okay, you bought the product, we're done paying for it, that cost related to the school bus is over, you purchased it, okay? Salary is recurring. So, the recurring increase in board, in board contributions in nineteen, twenty-six point three, in twenty-twenty-one, as we're entering COVID, it was one point eight. In twenty-one, twenty-two, it was three point six, with a total compensation, because we gave bonuses out, of eight point seven, eight point seven million dollars in, in twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, it was five point one recurring. That's straight salary increase. And then you have eight point two in total compensation. In twenty-three, twenty-four, four point nine increase in recurring contribution from the board. All of these are cumulative, right? It's, you have to add them all up, and I will at the end. Twenty-four, twenty-five was five point three. At the bottom, you can see what, what the board has done when it comes to insurance, fourteen million dollars or so. Our insurance plan has not increased a premium on employees in over six years. That is unheard of, and it's one of those things that happened behind the scenes. The only reason why employees didn't pay more for their insurance, like most companies do across the entire United States, not just a Florida thing, is because the board paid fourteen million dollars to prevent that from happening related to that. So, the total over time is forty-nine point five million dollars, by the way, because I am competitive, in case you didn't know, competitive. That's two and a half times the all-time record for that period of timeframe in Clay County's district. Okay, so, I think what, what I wanted to do was just kind of point out to the board that when we've had the ability to do so financially, we've invested in our employees, because quite frankly, our employees deserve it, and our employees deserve more. I mean, to be clear, our employees deserve more than what they're currently getting. You either have the money or you don't. It's always been, my recommendation to the board has always agreed, that if you have the money, it should go to the employees. The challenge this year that's different is the availability of funds. And so, I, I would be important just to kind of give a brief overview for the board to kind of see that again related to.
Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate you going over the budget with specific charts and plans, because with all of the negative chatter, some people have misinformation, the information that we have has been given to lots of folks, and then it's kind of like playing a game of telephone. It becomes something it's not. And I tell you that I appreciate, especially this little paper you gave us right here, because I said to someone the other day who was very angry with us, yeah, I said, has it dawned on you we're telling the truth? We don't have the money. And I feel like that's super basic, right? We really don't have the money, and if we did, we would give it to you. So, I just had to say it out loud with this group of people, because for some reason, your message is being missed amongst those groups of folks, you know?
Yeah, I'm not going to comment, we're in a situation of rain related to that. I, I just wanted to bring some clarity and talk in really simple street language, hey, when expenditures are higher than revenue, there's only two ways to do it, increase the money. I've explained to you how, how the legislature funded us, so you know that ain't happening, right? So, then you have to reduce costs. I explained what we did to reduce costs, but also wanted to tell you the agenda record related to recent history. Also, at the end, I meant what I said, it's not enough for our employees. We have to do better, right? The question is, do you have the financial ability to do better or not? I don't know, relative to what you're saying.
Mr. Ross, I just want to say a few things.
Sure.
Did you or did any of us know, prior to January of, what was it, last year, no year before last? Can't keep track.
Last year.
Last year, again, that this was going to happen? That we were going to turn and have some cuts, or that we were going to have to cut our budget?
No.
Okay, so, I've had several people.
If you recall, originally, the, the legislature didn't even meet until March, whatever that was. Recall, the legislature did not end on time, they did the recessing back for overtime, whatever you want to call that, extended session. Okay, so, we really didn't even have an idea of revenue at that point. And if you recall, there was three wildly different budgets that were proposed, the House budget, the Senate budget, what the governor wanted for that. And then, the legislature came back and darn near at the, at the very, very end that occurred. And in addition, the federal government withheld the funds at, at the same time, so, and they held the last payment from us. So, there was a lot that happened at that point, but the answer to the question is, there would be no way to predict.
All of those things.
All of those things.
Especially when they've never, and they've never happened, some of those things have never happened in the history of.
That's correct.
Our, the history. So, I think sometimes, I, I know that, that information, and, and it's really hard when people can't pay their bills and inflation's getting higher and milk has gone up and, and toilet paper's two dollars higher. I spend a lot of time, well, my husband spends a lot of time at the grocery store, but, so we, we pay attention to these things, and so, we get, we get it, and you have mouths to feed. And it does break my heart as someone who, who votes on this and is trying to, to find ways and, and dig, and, but it's like, and this is probably the worst example ever, and I probably shouldn't even say it, but it's like driving down the road and all of a sudden your engine blows up. It's a financial strain that you didn't expect to happen, and now you have to find transportation. You have to find the means to be able to still feed your babies and, and get to work and, and pay the bills and do all of the things. So, I think on top of all of this that we're having to face, we didn't expect this, so therefore, we couldn't prepare for it. And I think that the district has done a great job. Like you said, other districts are trying to come up with eighty-five million dollars with their budgets. Some are, are in, in even bigger financial hurt as far as their fund balances. So, um, but I also wanted to state too, that with our salaries, thank you for doing this, because like I said before, when we had it, we gave it, and we want more than anything to have it, to be able to give it. But there was years where this didn't happen. And we are having, and I know this, because I had to put shoes back and clothes back and, and things I wanted as a child, because I grew up on a teacher salary. Like, I, I know these things. So, there were years where there wasn't pay increases, and we are trying to make up for that in a, in a time and in a, in an economy and a way that Florida is, is last in pay and, and all the things. And we're trying to, we as a board have discussed openly many times, whether it's through policy, whether it's on the board floor, finding ways to be creative to help teacher pay, to help have community relationships, to help have partnerships, to help fundraise in our schools so that they can have additional funds to do the things that they're doing. So, I just, I, I can't sit here and be quiet and not say that, that we're just sitting here idling. There, there's been overwhelming emails. There's been several that have actually individually wrote me personal stories. I appreciate those so much, that we can't respond to right now, but I want to just openly say that we hear you and we're not ignoring you. We're not saying that we don't want to help you. What we're saying is, this is what we've done. We want to continue to do this. This is where we are, and we are trying to find solutions to get back to here so that we can continue to do the things that we're doing. There has been multiple discussions that, um, I'll, I'll tread lightly there. There's just, there, we're trying to find solutions. There's been, poor Dawn, she's, we've asked her so many different things and so many different ways, and, and it's still the same answer. So, I just want our staff and our teachers to know that we're not ignoring them. It really is that this is the situation. I also want to, yeah, that's what I want to say.
So, so if I could, you know, we still, I would emphasize or leave it, or end it like this, we still have to do better. There's no doubt that, that our teachers and our support staff and our administrators deserve better. And so, there are, are some comprehensive plans that we'll be discussing related to how to, how to reduce further expenditures so that we would have the availability to compensate our employees more in additional revenue sources potentially for that, because that should be a priority. It definitely is. We live in a competitive world, and so we have to make, you know, I think that Clay County is a great place to work, but I also think that you also have the need salary demands of people, and so we need to find who do better, ways to, ways to do that, and we're discussing that in the future. So, if I could, because we kind of got a short amount of time, this is the legislative priority piece, right? You asked for the, like, half of the formats, this is what it came, came up to be. We did include some of the money stuff that you talked. Here's the TSIA, got a star, and what that is. And also, just, just the idea, like, when you look at transportation, the cost of transportation and what they funded at, it's kind of illuminating, utility rates going off, FRS contributions. So, there's a little bits of information on here, but this is kind of like the finishing of a product that, that you guys had asked for previously. And I'm going to go very quickly through the agenda, because we have an executive session with, with the Sheriff's Department over security, and we also have an executive session with our labor firm.
This is really beautiful.
You can thank, okay, let me give a shout out. Trudy.
Yeah.
Trudy, you're awesome. Thank you.
It's really, really beautiful. Well done.
She doesn't make a job.
It's amazing.
We're not. We're free to make excuses.
Make mistakes.
So, in looking at the agenda, here's some things just for your knowledge, just a reminder that November sixth meeting is also the organizational meeting for, for the district. So, that's the, that's the meeting that we start off with. We're, the Secretary of the Board, which by the way, my statue, superintendent's the Secretary of the Board, I knew that, Secretary of the Board goes ahead, and the election of the Chair and Vice Chair, and the meeting times are decided there. Okay, I'll confer with Mr. Blocker on the procedure there, make sure that we're all good to go. It's usually a very quick meeting before we go into the.
And that will include the changes we made so we can attend like the FSBA?
Yes.
Like those dates? Okay.
In fact, Kelly, if you make a note, let's, let's send out the, the calendar.
Yes.
Because there's two, two dates that are different, the December one and then July fourth.
July, yeah.
Yep. I think Ms. Bonnie did send it out.
Well, did she send it out already?
Yes, and she sent out the, um.
I see, I just wanted to make sure, because in the past, you know, we did calendars without really including the FSBA.
Yep.
Schedules, okay.
Yeah, it's on there. Okay, Bonnie is probably going to text me soon because she is watching.
She's probably watching.
She is watching, so she's keeping me straight, so, yeah.
So, so in the discussion agendas, the public hearing for the advertisement for the Neola updates, remember, because they have a team of attorneys, every time the legislature meets, the legislature comes up with new laws, we have to treat policies, they were already put out for advertising. This is the actual public hearing to vote them in under the, the provision. Most of the other items within the agenda are routine in nature. A new one is the approval of the Clay Education Foundation Board Directors. That's new. Part of the process is, under their own audit, is that you would look at those names, nothing controversial there. Meeting, travel out of county, personnel consent agenda, it's National Education Week and Educational Support Professionals Day, proclamation in there related to that. Elementary student travel, public hearing for modifications to the Student Progression Plan. One of the things that happened is the legislature and the State Board of Education took away certificates of completion from, from high school. So, that really affects one, two, three, four, five, six different parts of the People Progression Plan, so they're all related to that one issue of new legislation, make sure that it's correct and updated. There's a memorandum of understanding of Clay County Fire and Rescue for Rite Alongs for students that are CTE, that are in, in the fire program. K-12 out of, out of county travel, early college program with, with St. John's Brummer State College, that's the articulation agreement. Another articulation agreement with the University of Puerto Rico for interns, School Psychologist Weeks coming up. Contract for mental health provisions through, through our mental health department, there's our mental health dollars. We do contract out some mental health work. Proposed allocation changes, the monthly financial reports, budget amendments, all the usual stuff, and a slew of stuff related to Bryce's shop of repairs for our various schools. Orange Park High's gym and locker room renovations, as well as Lake Asbury Junior High Classroom Edition, the reconciliation rates board, Orange Park Junior High is on there, just a whole bunch of them you can read through. If you have any questions, you can contact me or, or Bryce, and we can answer your questions. So, that kind of completes everything from, from me.
Mr. Ross, can I add one thing for what Ms. Bonnie just shared?
Sure.
She, she would like to remind the board members that the December workshop is going to be held on Monday, December first, due to the joint conference being on December second.
Bonnie's keeping us straight from afar.
She is, she is.
Jesus. Thank you.
She added it to the email to Ms. Hanson. Okay, so, no further deeper agenda comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, School Board Attorney comment?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a, one of the cases involving instructional staff discipline has come up. The attorneys that represent this individual have requested a, essentially, a hearing in front of y'all as a board. Our recommendation is to, to not do that. So, basically, the way it would work is, it would go to the Division of Administrative Hearings, which is DOA. That is, we believe the most appropriate, that's my recommendation, to go to DOA. They'll appoint an administrative law judge who will hear it, will have outside counsel provide it. The reason I think that's advisable, because they had requested three days of y'all's time to essentially have this hearing in front of y'all. I think that would be challenging, because, you know, there could be some questions directed to y'all. We don't, you need to turn this into some political spectacle. If they're contesting the issue, my recommendation is just send it through the Division of Administrative Hearings, let an administrative law judge hear it. We feel very confident that everything was handled appropriately, that we can defend the actions that were taken, and we can deal with that, so we don't turn this into some political spectacle. But I would just like to see if we can get concurrence from the board to, to move forward with that course of action.
Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Hi.
Ms. Dole?
Yeah, I don't know if y'all, I'm sorry, I should have asked, I don't know if the superintendent had anything to add to that as well.
No, no, so, in that process, Mr. Blocker would represent the board, but we'd also have our outside counsel. I'm like, we're. but we also had our outside counsel on way to turn any of the cases.
Yes, ma'am. So, so we have consensus to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am. I'll keep y'all updated as, as things develop. If we have any more of these, I'll keep y'all updated.
Ms. Gillhawson, any further board comments?
No. We have another insurance committee meeting this, next Thursday. And I think I talked to Ms. Posey about an idea we want to throw out regarding self-funding and utilizing it to its fullest potential. Other than that, I would like to see, you know, what you spoke about, the shortage. I expect the same thing next year, and I would like to have a budget meeting. I would like to see what, as a board, you know, obviously, we're not all accountants and doing the day-to-day, but I still think we can come up with some ideas, brainstorm, maybe how we can handle next year. So I don't know when we want to do that, but should be sooner than later. That's it.
Mr. Alvera?
I wanted to say that for school, school employees and the people who listen right now or they're going to listen to this video, that our mission, since I've been here for almost a year, I know our mission has been always for the betterment of the teachers, the students, and transparency has been one of the main purpose for this board. We've been truthful and honest one hundred percent. And we will continue to be truthful and honest one hundred percent. There's no reason to not trust us. We're going to keep working on the betterment of everybody, the best we can. And about what we talked about earlier, I can say in this last year, I have seen myself that we take, we trust you. We take, obviously, ninety-nine point nine percent of your recommendations in good faith. Sometimes we might disagree on things here and there, and thus, the purpose of our earlier conversation and things like that, there are very controversial, we want to have part in. And it's not for, we want us as a board to be able to get the credit for the good things that we do. And also, if we make a wrong decision, we're going to take the credit for that too. It doesn't have to be only you, you know me?
I just want to give a shout out to Mark Naftak. So I, many of you may or may not know that my grandkids were home with me for school for a while, and my, my daughter went to teach at Middleburg High School. She absolutely loves it. Loves their principal, who is Principal of the Year for Clay County. My, they, we all have matching shirts. We stand in the end zone. They barbecue. It's like one big giant family. I've not gone yet with my matching shirt, but they, my youngest granddaughter started there as a freshman and absolutely having a great time. And then my granddaughter, who is currently in eleventh grade, she's going to have no more of this homeschooling thing. She's going to go to Middleburg High in January. So I just want to tell you that the whole family's having such a great time, and I'm really proud of their principal. He stands in the hallway. One time, my daughter told me he saw a kid. He was having a really good conversation with my daughter, and he's like, "Hold on." And he went running down the hallway because he thought somebody had an air bud, a bud in their ear, and they might have been listening or doing something. So he's super engaged in trying to do the best thing he can for those kids, and it's really, really fun for my family. So I just wanted to give that shout out, that now all the kids will be gone from the house. It's not a bad thing, all right? And they'll all be in person in public school to enjoy all the other benefits that schools have to offer. So it's great, yeah.
I just want to remind the board that I sent the information to Ms. Bonnie about Clay Day. It's coming up. It'll be in January. It gets really cold over there too in that time of year. But I encourage us all to go so that we can advocate for public education and advocate for, for Clay County. I know Mr. Rossky and I go every year. We try, well, I mean, multiple trips. I know he has it as well, and then all over the state advocating for Clay County. So I think it would, it would be great if we could all attend and speak to our delegations, speak to other legislators. Our CFO will be there, all, all people present and wanting to hear from us and how things are impacting our county and, and what's happening with us. Because I try, every time I try to talk to, to anybody and everybody that will listen that has any form of, of hand and change, I always say it's not a one-size-fits-all, and it's so true. What they do down south is not what we do up here. What we do up here is not what they do over there. Every county and every area is unique. So I think we've learned that from CTE and the ACE program and all of that. That is su- super crucial here in Clay County. So I think it would be a good idea if we could all try to go to that. I, I too want to make, I'd do a little shout out. On the other side, I can't believe I'm doing this because I went to, to Middleburg, but. Dr. Halter, Mr. Mitchell, all of the staff over there lately spent a lot of time at Clay High, more than I think I feel like I ever have.
I'm kind of jealous of Clay High, actually, so, you know.
They're doing a lot of community outreach and a lot of community relationships. And I know that that's something that we've talked about as a board. One of our strategic plans is, is doing that, and I think that they do a really good job at that. I, I can't help, I, I don't want to ever not acknowledge that. And I know we do that at, at a lot of schools. But I think that they've taken care of teachers there very well, not that other schools haven't. I just, I know that they're doing a lot more and reaching out to do a lot more. So it's exciting to see. I've gotten a lot of invites over there to partake in, in a lot of their activities. So that was very nice and enjoyable, like I said, to be part of. And then lastly, I just want to end on this. I know I had some conversations and some screenshots and text messages and, and all the things about. I just want to make an announcement. I, I know that, our teachers know this, so I'm a little confused too. If you guys are short supplies, I did contact Clay Education Foundation and made sure that we didn't have a shortage with the Garber article and making sure that all of those supplies were stocked. They're ready. If you guys need supplies, they're ready to donate, and that way you don't have to purchase them. You can have them, and you don't have to bring them from home or do all the things. So that's encouraging to know that we have a great partnership with them and, and our teachers. With that, this meeting is adjourned.